I will call to all the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on November the seventh, two thousand and twenty-five through posting a notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-four. The pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Matt Perrinbaum, Principal at Washington Elementary School. He has been with the district for eighteen years, and he began his role here in Janesville in July of... Wait, okay. Sorry, I was...I said that wrong. Anyway, okay, whatever. He's, in addition to being principal at Washington Elementary School, he's been serving...he served for six years as Assistant Principal at Edison Middle School and also served as a teacher and Dean of Students at Franklin Middle School for twelve years. Washington's goal is to provide a safe learning environment that engages students while challenging them to achieve at high levels. Mr. Perrinbaum, who do you have here with you today?
Thank you, and it's my pleasure to introduce two star students from Washington School, Genevieve Lambert and Henry Hassenger.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to adopt the November eleventh, twenty-five Board of Education agenda. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously seven to zero. Safety message.
Well, that's me.
Yes, ma'am.
I am recycling my safety message from the PPC meeting from last week, so if you heard it already, then I won't be quizzing you, but I just figured it was still timely. The safety message relates to some considerations regarding daylight saving time. We just changed our clocks, and I think some people are still getting used to that, correct? I don't mind it, actually, but here's some, just some safety tips around that time of year. So, check alarms, replace batteries, and test your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors when you change your clocks each year. It's a good reminder. Prepare emergency kits, create a winter car kit, though those cold temperatures are here the last couple of days, we've certainly felt them. So include essentials like a blanket, flashlight, batteries, and maybe even some non-perishable snacks and a first aid kit. Inspect your fire extinguishers, check that your fire extinguishers are in good working condition and have a valid recharge check. And always just some driving safety precautions, drive with caution, be aware that in the morning and evening commutes now will have darker conditions, and other drivers may be adjusting to that change, so drive defensively. Of course, always avoid distractions, keep your phone away, put away and avoid eating or drinking while driving, turn down the radio to stay alert, be visible, wear bright or reflective clothing, and use lights when walking or cycling, especially during darker hours. I really noticed all of a sudden, boy, you could go for a walk at four-thirty or five a couple of months ago, and now it is quite dark, so keep in mind that visibility. And that is where I'm stopping tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Okay. Next, one point five, Parker High School and Arise Virtual Academy, AP Global Scholar Recognition.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here to introduce to you a group of students and a group of teachers who really truly have gone above and beyond in their academics. The students that I have with us tonight are AP scholars. Those are students that have excelled in our Advanced Placement Program. Last year, we had two hundred and eighty students at Parker complete three hundred and twenty-four tests. That was a new record for us, and we've done the sign-ups for this school year already, and already we're fifteen percent above that. So what does that tell us? Our students are taking advantage of the opportunity, and the best thing that comes from that, not only is the ability to really look at problems and present their opinions and write and do good at a college-level class, but also if they score a three or higher, they get credit when they go to college. There's a high percentage of our students in the school district of Janesville that do go on to four-year or two-year college with maybe even their first year of credits already done because of the opportunities that they've had. And it's my pleasure to introduce to you some of the students that have made those things happen this past year and over the course of their time in high school. First group I'd like to introduce to you are AP scholars. These are the students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more Advanced Placement exams. First student, Joe Trumpy, Kylie Basham. Next, I'd like to present Navea Greer.
Yeah.
He doesn't have his glasses on.
Tayana Call. And we had four students that not with us tonight, Audrey Osman, James Reinhardt, Abigail Sanus, and Alex Valley. The next group of students I'd like to introduce to you are AP Scholars with Honor. This is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point two five on all of their exams taken and score three or higher on four or more of these exams. First student I'd like to introduce to you is Russell Growroot.
Congratulations. Is your grandpa hurt?
Yeah.
He was my boss for a long time.
Julia Jones.
Put you a picture with him.
Natalie Verrick. Also not with us this evening, but earning the honor, Abigail Frankie, Paula Martinez, and Ivy Williams. Our AP Scholars with Distinction are students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all their exams and score a three or higher on five or more exams. Our first student being recognized as a scholar with distinction is Cooper Buell.
Next, I'd like to recognize Nancy Hernandez Gomez. Dylan Schilling.
I gotta pay attention, really. We can loan him some money.
And last but not least, Lila Vobian. The next group of people I'd like to introduce to you are the people that really have acted as mentors for our students and really help make things happen in the classroom. There are AP instructors at Parker. Almost all of our teachers hit the global average, meaning their score met or exceeded all of the scores, the average of all scores of tests taken, and the state average also. And almost all of our teachers had ten or more students taking tests this last year. First teacher I'd like to introduce to you is Amy Lawrence, our teacher of AP two-D Design.
Thank you very much.
Angie Zarnowski, who teaches Calculus AB.
Tell superintendent I don't wear glasses when I referee.
And hardly ever opens his eyes.
Tough room. Moving on. Moving on, it's my pleasure to introduce Nikki Worth, teacher of AP Chemistry. Bob Getka, retired Parker teacher of Computer Science A and Computer Science Principles. Crystal Callison, teacher of AP Literature and Composition. Gabrielle Hankins, teacher of AP Language and Composition. Matt Flynn, teacher of AP European History. Alexandra Scardino, teacher of AP Human Geography. Angie Zarnowski and Nicole Zilman, teachers of Precalculus. Never seen someone working the meat fall out, but it's gonna happen this next time. Brian Devine, teacher of AP Psychology. Megan O'Brien, teacher of AP Statistics.
Thanks very much. I think AP has a good chance.
Kate Bennett, teacher of AP Government. Matt Flynn, teacher of AP US History. And Nolan Sterns, teacher of AP World History. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize our staff and students this evening. It's my pleasure to turn the podium over to Veronica McMahon.
Hi, I'm Veronica McMahon, and I have the pleasure to recognize two of our teachers tonight. The Advanced Placement Program at Arise currently offers eighteen AP courses. We maintain about forty students in these offerings. Usually about twenty of these are from Janesville and twenty are statewide students. Despite our moderate class size, our curriculum, combined with the commitment and expertise of our teachers, consistently ensures superior academic results. A clear example of this is Stephanie Davis's AP English courses. Her AP English Language and AP English Literature courses both consistently attract strong enrollment. Student performance is consistently above both state and global average benchmarks. Last year, a hundred percent of her students enrolled, successfully sat for the AP exams, and scored averages exceeding both the state and global averages. Elliot Hagenbusher is another example of this exceptional performance. His AP Environmental Science course also had students who exceeded both the state and global average benchmarks, and a hundred percent of his students also took the exam with scores exceeding both state and global averages. Thank you so much for recognizing these wonderful teachers.
Thank you, parents, family members, and friends. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening. I'm sure you're very proud parents tonight. Moving on, student presenters from Craig High School. Kaitlin Kessler.
My name is Kaitlin Kessler, for those of you who don't know me, and I am Craig High School's School Board Representative for this year. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the first two meetings due to having CNA class at Blackhawk Tech, but I am happy to report that I have passed both my exams, and I am officially a Certified Nursing Assistant.
Yay.
I'm excited to be here to represent Craig and share with you all that's been happening within our school. Thank you to Dr. Beyond also for filling in in my absence. To start off, Craig held its Honor Wall Ceremony, which took place over Homecoming Week last month, where the Student Council Executive Board, along with Dr. Beyond and other Craig staff, were able to honor the two inductees, Mr. Greg Hughes and Mrs. Tammy McCaslin Fanning. They both have many professional accomplishments and positive contributions to their communities, making them stand out for the hard work they have put in both their work lives and to the lives in their community, inspiring and influencing those around them. We are grateful for the impact they have made throughout their lives. Also during Homecoming Week, Craig's National Honor Society held a Spikeball Tournament after our Homecoming Assembly on Friday to help raise money towards their club. The organization that they picked this year to help support is the Rock County Cancer Coalition. This organization helps raise money to offer financial relief to recipients undergoing cancer treatments, so the National Honor Society is eager to be able to help and support the organization. Our DECA club has had a great start to the school year. This year, they increased their membership from fifty-three to eighty-six members. They also helped run the student-based enterprise, The Cougar Corner Store, which has tripled sales from last year, and in just the last month, they had over nine thousand dollars in sales. DECA participated in Trick or Can, where they collected goods for local food pantries like Echo. Lastly, they participated in Color a Smile. They colored a variety of coloring sheets that were given to assisted living homes, children's hospitals, and to veterans to help bring a smile to their day. DECA is beginning to prepare for the upcoming competitions this winter. Youth Homelessness Week is this week, and Blue Ribbon of Promise is collecting different items every day to give to kids who may be in need of these items. One in thirty young kids from thirteen to seventeen years old and one in ten young adults from eighteen to twenty-five will experience some form of homelessness this year. In the school district alone, we have over three hundred students that experience homelessness. We want to help support these people by having students bring in essential items. Monday, students brought in perfume and cologne. Today, students brought in laundry detergent. Tomorrow, they will be collecting shower products like shampoo and conditioner. Thursday is deodorant, and lastly, on Friday, students will bring in toothbrushes and toothpaste. Blue Ribbon members are also going to be bringing in snack items, including granola bars, fruit snacks, and more. FFA has begun the year by selling an assortment of fruit to raise money for their club. Next week, our FFA will be attending the Wholesome Leaders Event after school on November twentieth at DeForest High School. This is an opportunity where members will be able to connect with nearby chapters, share ideas, and elevate their leadership skills. They'll participate in leadership workshops, listen to State FFA Vice President Sam Mel give a talk on dynamic leadership skills, and play in a fun cornhole tournament. Our Interact Club collected items over the month of October to use as bingo donations for when they went to the Riverview Apartments on October twenty-third to host bingo for the residents who lived there. They had a fun afternoon entertaining the residents and playing bingo. On October twenty-ninth, Interact had a Pinkout Day where the school dressed in pink for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. They also donated to the Pink Fund, which helps support breast cancer patients in active treatment who have lost their source of income due to their diagnosis. Interact members also have the opportunity to go to the Zonta Say No to Violence Against Women event that is happening on November seventeenth, where they'll be bringing a piece of art or writing that expresses how they feel about the topic. Two weekends ago, Craig's Spanish Honor Society celebrated Day of the Dead, which is celebrated on November first and second. Students came in over conferences to create a beautiful entrance as you walk in the main doors of Craig. They hung up colored butterflies that the students made, along with other Spanish decorations. Half of the butterfly was colored, and the other half was a short writing about a memorable story they remember about a family member, friend, or pet that has passed away. It was a great way for students to see Spanish culture and remember loved ones in their lives who have passed away. Also, two weekends ago, Craig's cross-country team headed up to the state cross-country race, where the boys' team competed and where Lulu Coleman also competed individually. It was both the boys' team and Lulu's second consecutive year at state and Craig's twenty-fourth overall year attending state meet. We are very proud of all the cross-country runners and the hard work they put in this year. Alexis Hansen had an amazing golf season and competed in the state golf meet last month. And finally, our volleyball team had a successful season and ended up as conference champions. Fall sports are all wrapped up now, and winter sports are just beginning. Girls' basketball, gymnastics, and girls' and boys' hockey all started their seasons yesterday, and the other sports will begin soon. Craig Girls Soccer will also be starting their open gyms next month to prepare for their spring season. Craig Show Choir has been working hard to prepare for their first performance, which will take place this Saturday with the Wisconsin Singers at seven PM. Last week, we celebrated School Psychologist Week. Mrs. Costello is our school psychologist at Craig. School psychologists support students' mental health, well-being, and academic success by providing direct support, assessing learning and behavioral needs, and consulting with teachers, families, and administrators. We are very thankful to have a great school psychologist at Craig. Teachers held conferences on October twenty-second and twenty-third, and students had off that Thursday and Friday. We also just wrapped up our first quarter of the school year, and students have been doing well. We have Thanksgiving break coming up in two weeks, where students will enjoy having Wednesday through Friday off. This is all I have for this month, but I'm excited to be back next month to share even more that will be happening at Craig. Thank you.
And next, without further ado, he couldn't be here last week or two weeks ago, but he's here today. Dylan Statham.
It was worth a shot, good enough.
I tried twice.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Holesman, School Board Commissioners, and members of the community, or what's left of them. My name is Dylan Statham, Sr. I am a student at Rock River Charter enrolled in the e-learning program. I would also like to introduce my one-year-old son, Dylan Junior. Everybody heard him. And the mother of my son, Jana Fowler, which is right there holding him. I started Rock River Charter in September of two thousand and twenty-five. I am finishing my last class and will be ringing that graduation bell tomorrow at twelve o'clock, which, thank you, thank you. You are all invited to come and watch. Being a young father, I needed Rock River Charter because it helps me in lots of ways. First, I would like to give my shout-out to Michelle Wells. Michelle goes above and beyond for not just me, but for every student as well, especially the parents. She has helped the mother of my son graduate last year, and I will be graduating tomorrow, like I said. Michelle not only helps students get to school, but works with each of us on any problems arise due to me and the stress of being a young parent. She is a good listener, she helps me with class, she feeds me, come on. She gives, she gives me and my family diapers, wipes, even a car seat. Because of her, I am graduating early. I cannot thank Michelle enough for what she does to help everyone out, especially me and my family. Like I said earlier, I am in the e-learning program. The e-learning program works with mostly seniors who are close to graduating. We use a program called Amintum to do online courses. We also have a class called Senior Seminar. The seniors' seminar classes focus on our plans, on our future. My plan is to be an electrician or a lineman. My plan is to be an electrician or a lineman. I am exploring Blackhawk Technical College and our apprenticeship program as an option to further my education. I recently toured Blackhawk Technical College or Rock River Charter, and I think this may be the school for me. Next, I would like to tell you what's going on at my school this month. Earlier this month, we had, earlier last month, we had presenters come into our school and talk about jobs at the high school. The last week of October, we had parent, teacher, student conferences. The goal is for 100% of the students to have a conference. Of course, my conference was good. Tonight, we have Books and Bingo and Faf- Fafsta? I don't know how to pronounce it. Fafsta, my bad, I'm sorry. Tonight, I filled out my Fafsta before I came here. A Scoopy Night is coming up on November 19th at Court Street Covers. We hope to see you there. GED Option 2 is partnering with US Extensions to hold a teen cuisine class, where students will be learning healthy ways to prepare food for their new families. US Extension will also be coming to parenting classes in February to teach basic cooking and basic nutrition skills for students to make food for their families. Before I conclude, Mr. Holtzman, I would like to tell you, I would like you to know, that it is very inspiring to see a young man of color being the head of a school board. Thank you for allowing me to take this time to speak to you about Rock River Charter, and I would like to thank you for the continued support of our school.
Well, if you're not fighting back tears...
Dylan, you made us cry.
Got the last word in there.
Congratulations, Dylan. We'll be thinking of you tomorrow.
All right. Moving on, citizen comments. We have none.
Did I have to sign up?
You should.
I don't want to do that. Never mind.
I was late.
And who are you and where do you live?
Yes, Oakley Ryan, 1000 East Milwaukee Street. I'm the house that has the new large terrace and a lot of trucks outside it, again. I just came because I was so excited to see the news on the state report card. So I know how hard every single person has been working in the school district, from the students, from the teachers, to administration, to the school principals. We're excited to celebrate with you. We're not done, but you've got to celebrate the wins. So just want to thank everyone for the focus on education excellence for all. And so that was my comment. Thank you.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously seven to zero. Next, presentation of the state report card.
Had to check my calendar, see what I'm doing at noon tomorrow. I think my plans might have just changed, right? So, you know, I think one of the great things about the school district in Janesville is that we have all kinds of success stories, and tonight, we got to see a plethora of students and staff who do amazing work. We heard from some kids who do some good stuff. And the reality of the school report card is like, none of that is on the school report card, right? Those stories about the difference that teachers make and what we do in order to inspire, empower, and achieve kids isn't directly related to what happens on those four days in March and April. So having said that, we have some great news to share, and we're going to kind of go over the report card, kind of give you a big-picture overview. Of course, at any time, either during the presentation or after, if you have some questions you want to get into specifics, we'll talk about that. Tonight, we're going to talk about the overall state report card results from the district perspective. Provide a few updates, talk a little bit about the newness of the report cards, there's new pieces there, and some improvement opportunities, some celebrations, some next steps. You're going to hear from me for just a couple of slides, and then I'm going to ask Dr. DeGraff, who's been instrumental in the leadership of the district moving forward. It's great to be able to say that we improved to 61.6, which meets expectation. What I can tell you is that we knew our school forward and ACT data by the end of the summer, but we didn't knew know exactly what that meant. We knew we made achievement results, we weren't sure where we went. And we also knew that the report card score of meeting expectations moved from 58 to 60 this year. So in order for us to make that leap, not only did we make the leap, but we made the leap in spite of the fact that they increased the level in order to get there. So you're going to see some things that are encouraging. The keys that I want you to just kind of note is in that priority areas. So 12.5% of our priority area is achievement and 37.5% is growth. One of the things that we knew that as we evaluated how to continue to improve on our report card was specifically to take a look at where we were in achievement. So these are last year's report card score and this year, so you see that we moved 5.9 points. And, you know, when we talk about a 10% growth, we were looking at 2% growth within our school, and we saw a 10% growth. So I just want to say thank you to our students who are working hard, our staff who are doing the great things every day in the classroom, our building leaders, our parents, our community members, the board members, the leadership team that I work with. All of those really make a difference in us setting the standard. And so this is the second year in a row that we continue to have our goals be math, reading, and attendance. You've heard us talk about math, reading, and attendance. And so we've been able to identify some areas of which we are going to continue to grow. But when we look at those areas of math, reading, attendance, a couple of things that really stand out to me. One, we saw all of our schools grow in achievement throughout the district. We saw six schools make one or two jumps from where the score was, so individually meeting meets expectations. So it either were not meeting expectations to meets expectations, or they were meeting expectations and they went to exceeding expectations. And so that's what this slide shows, and again, my message continues to be that all schools will meet and exceed expectations. And so last year, we were at 12, this year, we have 14. And what that also, I want to reiterate again, is the fact that that number moved up. And so we had a couple of schools that if the old number was there, we would have met expectations. So we continue to see ourselves on that steady pace forward. Having said that, we weren't where we used to be, and we're not where we're going to be, right? So we have some plans ahead, and those plans are ahead mean that we're going to continue to make growth by focusing on reading, math, and attendance, by continuing to create a warm, nurturing environment that kids want to be at, and by continuing to look at how we teach and how students learn. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Dr. DeGraff. She's going to talk to you about some of the details behind the report card and give you some big-picture overview. We could probably spend two hours here celebrating and looking at the details specifically about how we did. But, you know, again, what I want to celebrate from the district standpoint is that we've passed that expectation line, and that we're not going to look back and say, you know, how come or what if? We're saying we did it, and we're going to keep moving forward. I would also like to share that on Monday, Dr. DeGraff and I got an invitation to speak at a statewide conference, asking us how we're moving forward with our school scores. So people outside of the state are saying, hmm, Janesville's doing something good. I wonder what they're doing. I want to hear a little bit about that. And so we're excited about that prospect, and I hope that that will continue as we see success in all kinds of things that we're doing. So I'll turn it over to the genius behind this.
Well, thank you. Good evening, and as Superintendent Holtzman shared, we're very excited that we have moved to meeting expectations. So tonight, what I would like to do is share with you a little bit about some of the updates to the report card that are new this year in comparison to last year. And then I would like to break down the report card into the four priority areas to dig a little deeper and see how did we perform in each of those areas on the report card. So as we look at some of the changes that happened this year to the report card, as Superintendent Holtzman mentioned, there was a change in the report card accountability categories. So those ranges changed. So as you can see, meet expectations, for example, was at 58 last year. This year, it's at 60. So each category increased in order to move, to continue to move up into each category. So that was one change. Another change is we have two years of comparable achievement data. Typically, we have three years of achievement data on the report card. But last year, as you know, they changed the cut scores to proficiency. So it, with those changes in cut scores to proficiency, we can only compare two years of data. So we will look at those two years of data tonight. Next year, they will move back to three years of data. Also informational on the report card that they've added, they have added test participation to indicate that all districts have to have at least 95% of their students participating on the assessment in order to have accuracy of an overall report card score. And then in addition, because of Act 20, they include a section with a third-grade reading score that's informational only. But as you can see in our district, we were at about 60% of our students proficient on the third-grade reading and about 10% higher than the state. So which is a significant increase from last year. Also informational only, the state continues to add more information in grades nine through 12 on things like work-based learning, industry credentials, AP courses, as well as enrollment in our fine arts courses and areas. So those are all informational pieces. So as we take a look at each category, our first category is in the area, or priority area, is in the area of achievement. And we had a seven-point growth in the achievement category. So the achievement category looks at students in grades third through 11. It looks at the forward, the pre-ACT, and the ACT data, and it averages the reading and math scores together to give you your overall achievement score. So as you can see, we did increase from last year to this year, both in our ELA and math. But what we, we know that some of those proficiency cut scores changed, so we want to look a little bit more closely about what does that mean for our achievement score. So if we look at our achievement scores, this category is point-based. So you, your score is based on how many points you get for being advanced, meeting, approaching, or developing. So it's 1.5 points you receive for advanced, a point for meeting, and 0.5 for approaching, and zero points for developing. So if you look at how did we do in achievement, and we dig a little deeper into the data, what does that score mean? So you can see that we had about a 2.6% increase of students that are in the category of advanced. So we have more students advanced in our ELA. We also have more students, about a 2% increase in those students in meeting, and that what you want to see is less students in approaching and developing, and we see that that decreased. When you look at math, we did again see an increase in the percent of students advanced, a slight increase in meeting, and then we did see some decreases in approaching and developing. But what it tells us about this achievement category is that we performed better in ELA than math. So we made growth, or we increased achievement in both areas, but ELA was stronger than math. So that will be a focus we'll talk about in a little bit. So when we look at the second category of growth, and the growth category, we had a 4.8 increase. So that really focuses on how our students gain knowledge from year to year, and it's based on students of similar test scores and backgrounds. So I'm really comparing how does a student perform relative to similar students across the state. So again, in this area of growth, we saw an increase in English language arts, as well as math, and again, a little bit higher in ELA and math on the area of growth. And we know, we've talked a lot about in our district, our report card is weighted more on growth because we have a higher number of economically disadvantaged students. We only have 12% on achievement and about 37.5% on growth. So this category is very important to our district. We know that it's an area we have to continue to focus on, is keep growing our students. So when we look at the target group outcomes, the target group includes students that are in the bottom 25th quartile. So when we look at those students performing in the bottom 25th quartile, this was our highest area of increase. So we had a 9.2 increase in target groups. I remember a year or two ago, Commissioner Arjorie had asked about target groups because we know that was an area we were not as strong in. So we really focused a lot on increasing our target group outcomes. Target group looks at achievement, growth, chronic absenteeism, and graduation, and in elementary and middle school, it looks like, looks at chronic absenteeism and attendance. So we did make growth again in achievement. We saw growth in ELA and math. In chronic absenteeism, we did see some growth. Something to notice here and that we know we want to continue to improve on is those students in our target group. That still means almost 40% of the students in that group are chronically absent. So we know we need to be in school in order to learn, and so that will continue to be a focus. We had a slight decrease for our graduation rate within the target group. And again, graduation and chronic absenteeism are leg data as well, so it's from the previous year. So we, you know, are really excited to see that this area that we specifically focused on, we saw the highest increase. And when we look at the fourth and the last category, that is on track to graduation. And so on track to graduation is how are students achieving those educational milestones that lead to post-secondary readiness? So they consider those educational milestones to be third-grade reading, eighth-grade math, chronic absenteeism, and graduation. So again, you can see, we talked about when we shared our forward results, that we saw the highest increase in third-grade reading than we've ever seen, and we also had one of the highest increases in eighth-grade math, and those happen to be what fall into this category as educational milestones. So seeing that three-point increase is also exciting as well. Again, we saw less students that are chronically absent, and also graduation was just a slight decrease. So those are the four priority areas, and looking a little bit closer about how we did in each of those priority areas. And so we are excited about the growth that we have made, so we want to think about what did we do and what do we want to keep doing? We also know we have to be focused on continuous improvement. This is the start of really accelerating our growth, and we want to continue that, and we know we have more work to do. So what are some things that we feel have impacted or had a more significant impact on the growth in our report card? So we know that in our strategic goals, as our superintendent mentioned, over the last couple of years, we've really focused on reading, math, and attendance. And we will continue to do that in our strategic plan of student excellence focusing in those areas. We've really focused on monitoring attendance. We're not at the state average yet, but we've continued to improve our attendance rates, and Kim Perboom works closely with the student services staff and building to help continue to focus on that. As you know, Chris Mettenwald has worked with our high schools and is now working with our middle schools on Avid to get all of our students those supports that they need to be successful. Monitoring our students in the target group. So what we did this year with monitoring target groups, we want to continue to do next year and see that same growth, is really knowing who are those students and how are they improving every day and getting opportunities for reteaching and res- day and getting opportunities for reteaching and resources to help them be more proficient. We also made some changes in our assessment data at the K-12 level. So we have reading and math unit assessments, and they are aligned to the state standards. But when we looked at our forward and went high school and looked at ACT, not all of those standards we assess in our unit assessments. So we've gone back and we've worked with teachers. We've had teacher groups help us adjust our assessments to add more of the standards from forward and ACT so that we know what our students are being assessed on, that they're taught, and can show us their growth. We've also, as you know, and the board has supported the implementation of new curriculum in ELA and math. And so being able to implement that with fidelity and have a core curriculum that provides support and resources to our teachers. Our teachers are the ones that deliver that curriculum, and they're the experts who have the art and craft of teaching. But we want to make sure they have those tools and resources. And we appreciate the business department supporting that as well in being able to, you know, have those resources for our staff. We've talked about professional learning teams. Those are teams that meet weekly, and they plan together as teachers, but they also look closely at their data. And they say, who's proficient and who's not, and who needs reteaching if they don't know it? Or students who need extension, who already knows this and might need some extension? And lastly, I have the opportunity, and Chris and I go out to the schools, to look at our school improvement plans with our principals and with teacher leader teams. So I ask our teacher leaders that are in those groups for their feedback. So what do you think we're, you are doing well in? Or what resources and supports are helping you achieve at these high levels? Specifically, I asked the schools that had growth even higher than our district. So the teachers said three things to me. One is that they mentioned, whoops, one is that they mentioned the district pacing guides. So we have created pacing guides so that teachers are on pace with the curriculum. So we make sure that we're following that scope and sequence throughout the year. And they said, what was interesting before is when we would have transient students or new students transfer from another school, they might be a month behind or ahead. Now they're within days. So it's pretty seamless when they transition to our school. They also said, having that core curriculum. One of the teachers said specifically, she said, seven or eight years ago, I'd try to have a conversation across town with another fourth grade teacher, but they were maybe using a different resource. So to share ideas and strategies was really hard. And now we have these conversations all the time. And then lastly, they talked about our assessments. So for example, a fourth grade teacher said to me, our assessments that we have in our reading program, they're very rigorous and they're hard. So when they come to take forward, they feel easier for the students. And so we appreciate the, the rigor in those assessments as well. So hearing that from teachers is really powerful. So systems we've tried to put in place, but again, they're the ones who implement this and do the hard work. So very appreciative of the great work that our teachers are doing. So then future action steps. Again, we're focusing on our strategic plan and goals. So not only having those student excellent goals of reading, math, and attendance, but what are those goals that we're building on in staff excellence, operational excellence, and family and community engagement? We've entered that partnership with Studer as well, who we have begun working with on identifying those small number of goals as well, and also building that culture and climate around learning. We also know we really want to focus on chronic absenteeism, and especially with that target group. We also know that math, we didn't grow as much in as ELAs. We've done a math audit with our CISA, and they observed in over 40 different classrooms across elementary and middle and high school, and have given us some really great feedback on some adjustments and changes we can make related to professional development and instruction in math classrooms. And you've heard Chris and I also talk about, we see a drop in our data from fifth to sixth grade. And so we are meeting with other districts that have students that are increasing when they move to fifth to sixth grades. We've already had conversations with two to three districts who have provided some good insight on some next steps for us. So those are future action steps because as I mentioned, we know we need to continue to grow. We're excited about the progress, but want to think about continuous improvement. So Superintendent Holtzman is just going to highlight and summarize, and then we'll have time for questions.
That was one too many. All right. Probably in the light of where we are today, I can't show you that we met expectations too many times because we didn't get to do that last couple of years. So just reiterating that idea. You know, as we look at where we're spending some time and knowing where we have to make sure we continue is that highest increase is in target groups. We know that 12 and a half percent of the school report card is in achievement, and 38 and a half percent or 37 and a half is in growth. And so we need to make sure we're paying attention to that growth. And we're working hard. And I think we've named and claimed all the kids in the district, and we understand where they need to be and how we need to grow them. And that really, I think, is, is our goals moving forward. We, I mentioned before, all of our schools increased in achievement, and that's where we want. We want all of our kids to keep growing. And we know that we will continue to identify those strengths and areas of a continued improvement. We're not satisfied with where we're at. We're going to continue to work as hard as we can to keep moving forward, knowing that the report card is the forward-facing probably report for our school district. And there are many other things that we do that are amazing that will never be in the report card. And so we saw a few of those tonight. We'll continue to make sure we're paying attention to the things that matter. And we'll continue to make sure that we're providing opportunities for our kids to grow, our teachers to learn, and our parents to be involved. So I'll pause there. Probably questions are most likely for Dr. DeGraff, but I'll be able to help out if there's any questions.
Out of curiosity, I don't know if you can, maybe it isn't, what are some of the other districts we're working with to discuss some of these things?
Yeah, I'll let Allison talk about it.
Sure. So in, in our research, as far as when we were looking at the fifth to sixth grade transition, we've talked with some Prairie, La Crosse, and West Dallas. So. I'm curious, what were some of the ways that you identified or worked with the target groups that you think showcased this big movement? Because obviously, there was a lot of intentional probably decision-making with that. If you could just describe that a little bit? Sure. So first, we need to know who is in the target group and identify those students. So that's a lot of the work that we did too, is what are the data platforms and sources we have to identify who's in the target group and then follow that cohort? And then we wanted to ensure that every teacher knew who was in their target group in their classroom. So whenever they're looking at data, they have highlighted in a different color the students who are in the target group. And they're looking to see, did they reach proficiency on these standards, or did they not? So I need to provide reteaching or resources. So that constant monitoring and actually knowing who they are. And again, there may be challenges with attendance. So then they're also working with school teams to support them and getting them to school. So I think is really just a much more intentional focus on knowing who they are and closely monitoring them all throughout the year. And as Superintendent Holtzman mentioned, we like to name them and claim them.
I think we could also say that the last couple of years, we've used ACT data. And I'm looking at Chris for the, not next path, what's the, what's we use for the pre-ACT? Mastery prep? And I know that our high school staff have really looked at how the ACT curriculum matches or doesn't match with the curriculum we're teaching to make sure that we're preparing kids for what success could look like. So those tools have helped us really be more aware. I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but last year, I was at both Parker and Craig about the day the ACT information came back to kids. And this is the first time in my career I had students telling me their ACT score. Like they were excited about, hey, I got a blank on the ACT, which really helps promote and celebrate what the buildings are doing because there is a percentage of kids who are like, I don't even want to take this. It's not, what's it for me, right? And it helps us a ton to be able to make sure that kids are taking the assessment seriously. And so that, again, kudos to our buildings for making sure that we create an environment that that happens. And, you know, we think about technology and the ability to use information at times, right, where data rich and information poor. And we've utilized a few different tools now to be able to really quickly take all the data, get that information, and be able to pass that back out to our people who are utilizing it the best. And AI and those platforms do a nice job when we control it.
The chronic absenteeism is something that I know we've been working really hard at. What are the few things you feel like we've been doing that have made that successful? And what are we gonna, what are some of our things we need to do a little more of? I guess, to get that number. Sure. And I'll probably have Kim maybe talk about this a little bit too. But again, it's identifying who are those students and working with those students to let them know where they're at with their attendance, trying to work with those families. And really, most importantly, helping teachers and school staff continue to build those relationships with students so that they feel connected to people in the school and, you know, want to be engaged in school as well. But, you know, I'll let Kim add anything else that she works with our Student Services team on as well.
Along with what Dr. DeGraff shared, I would just say, a lot of the research shows that when students have a connection and a sense of belonging, they want to come to school and want to be a part of that school. So whether it's a teacher, a core group of friends, extracurriculars, like finding that niche and knowing that they have a sense of belonging and purpose, in addition to wanting to be there to get that diploma at the end of the 12th grade year, those are things that we constantly try to work with kids on. Do you have a favorite teacher? Do you have friends at the school? What do you like about school? Even if it's just lunch, like what do you like about lunch? Just to know that there's something there for them when they come every day that they can look forward to.
Worked with the Education Council with Forward Janesville and moving attendance as a priority as well to, so that they want to continue to support in how they can help the community to engage our families in attending school.
What is your best guess as to why the numbers decreased slightly for the graduation rate? Because we have other great numbers and chronic absenteeism has declined somewhat. So why, why did that happen?
Go ahead, Kim.
Looking at the historical data, I would say it was kind of a fluke year because once we released graduation rate from last spring, it significantly jumps back up to where we've historically been. So it's kind of outlier of a low graduation rate year that's on the report card. But last spring's cohort actually exceeded where we had been previously. So.
Because it's lag data.
Right. It's lag data.
Well, this has been a great day. You know, the whole meeting has been wonderful. And on behalf of the board, congratulations and thank you to the directors, custodians, maintenance, food service, pares, teachers, counselors, psychologists. It's all one big celebration and one huge effort. And we're very grateful. Make sure we thank the taxpayers for their support for the school district. And I want to thank, make sure we thank Forward Janesville for their help, always willing to help whatever we might need. In particular, helping us get on board again with the Studer Group and those kinds of principals. So we have a lot to celebrate. And thank you again very much. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I think you said, that was great.
Okay.
I just feel like, I feel like it just deserved.
Yeah. All right. Thanks to the athletic department for letting me officiate basketball despite the comments we heard today. All right. Oh, yes, Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee report.
I have my notes. Don't worry. I prepared my report. Should you even time me, Dan? 15 minutes?
No.
I'm just, I'm just teasing. I'm teasing. It's my levity. Okay. All right. Well, I just feel like that was so exciting, that, what great news. And we had great stuff at PPC. We held our November Policy Personnel and Curriculum Meeting on Monday, November 3rd. And here's a summary of that meeting. We started off learning about bright spots where Dr. DeGraff and a team of staff from Wilson Elementary were able to do a site visit to a school with similar demographics in Steubenville, Ohio, thanks to a very generous grant by the Forward Foundation. Wonderful. We are excited to hear about that experience and learn more about the strategies that have been implemented in Steubenville to allow them to experience such significant academic and attendance improvements. So that will be coming to us in the next PPC meeting in December. So that just gives a little foreshadowing of more exciting news. But I think, I just want to add a little anecdote. While we are obviously experiencing great growth ourselves, as we've seen tonight, we're not stopping there. And this is an example because our Dr. DeGraff and excited team went to a whole other state to dive in deep and, and learn from them. And I think that's just really gratifying to, to know that our people are just continuing to work so hard. So thanks for taking the time to do that. Presentation of coursebook updates happened next, and we were excited to learn about three new courses that were being recommended to the high school level. Emergency Medical Technician, which is affiliated with Blackhawk Tech. If that's correct. No. Mercy. I, gosh darn it, I should have.
I appreciate the testimony.
But Mercy, which is super exciting. So kudos to Mercy for working with us on that. And then AP Cybersecurity and AP Business and Marketing. I am very excited to hear about, you know, those courses. I think that they are, you know, kind of cutting-edge stuff and things that are going to help our students be able to be more marketable in the workplace and also the college level. And next, we had a great presentation of athletic updates in the Athletic Fall Report from Mr. McLeod. And he gave an overview of kind of what's going on fall in athletics for SDJ. We learned that middle school continues to see great growth in their student participation as well as programming. And they're always kind of working on tweaking what that program looks like to try to incorporate as many student participation opportunities as possible, which we know is so important. In addition, high school participation numbers for fall, we saw are continuing to rise. And we're seeing that as just an ongoing trend over a course of four years. That was the timeframe that we were looking at. A focus in the district is working on increasing numbers of coaches who also happen to be district staff members. So we're being mindful of that as well because there are significant benefits that can be obtained when staff are on site all day. We also learned about the complexities of the two activity and athletic directors at Craig and just their like scheduling and the things that they do throughout the day. So here is something that makes up their workload. They lead activities in club. They will occasionally act as principals when the time calls. They work on student behavior and supervision, oversight of building and cultural, building culture with those activities, working on increasing student engagement, and then also community engagement. Of course, there's tons of other things they're doing, but that gives a good overview. There also are things that we're working on with the athletic program just from a general standpoint. And And here are those things. Collaborate district and level departments, staff development, growth and retention, student leadership initiative. That program is called SALT. Data-driven decision-making, so in athletics, strategic planning, reimagining club and activity processes, and systemic planning with middle school ADs and also youth organizations. So there's a lot going on there from just like a big lens, which is always great to hear about. We enjoy those presentations very much. And then we ended our meeting where a great topic of conversation with Carrie Mickelson, with our staffing practices and assumptions. So Carrie shared and reviewed the big-picture overview and timeline for our staff plan, that schedule for the year. And that includes starting in November right now, after the third Friday count, to watch the enrollment numbers, so that we can start to plan for the rest of the school year for the next year for that staffing. So it really is an ongoing process that doesn't just happen in March or April, but throughout the year. Typically, numbers stay very stable as each grade rolls up from the next year. But the caveat is that kindergarten, many of those students we don't know about until they show up. And that can be a surprise. And so sometimes we see some fluctuating numbers, particularly at the kindergarten level, because of that. Over the course of January through March, there are going to be various staffing plans that will be due for the elementary, middle, and high school for those scheduling. And then in April, the board will look forward to hearing about what that final plan is and for us to approve that. So we just met yesterday to set the agenda for our December PPC meeting, which will be held on Monday, December 1st at 4:30 here in the ESC. And before I finish, I just want to give a shout-out to, say, Happy Veterans Day. And there are several people who served in the military. President Kevin Murray won. And sitting next to me, Commissioner Carl Dahmerhausen. And then Carrie and Brian back there, is Brian still here? So I don't think I'm missing anyone else, but those are the ones I knew about. So just join me, please, and wishing Happy Veterans Day to these hard-working individuals and thank them for their service. Thank you.
Outstanding. He was seven and a half, but who's counting?
Did you time me?
Nice work.
I gave you grace.
Future meetings.
The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee will meet on Tuesday, November 25th at 3:00 PM at the ESC. Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee will meet on Monday, December 1st at 4:30 at the ESC. And the next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 9th at 6:00 PM at the ESC.